It is six o'clock and I'm gonna convene the regular meeting of our May 16th Board of Commissioners meeting, and as always, we'll start with the invocation. I'll call on Vice Chairman Williams tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those so inclined, please bow your head in prayer. Wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings also. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work through this, our public service. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for your loving, thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. As we gather today, we pray you grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people, confidence in what is good and right, the ability to work together in harmony where there is honest disagreement, and finally, personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. In your most blessed name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start off with item 22-313, Proclamation and Awards, and I'm gonna recognize Kevin Rigoli, Fire Marshal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, County management. I'd like to ask some of the fire departments that have recently gone through the ISO rating to come up and be recognized. We have four here tonight. The history behind this is each fire department is rated by the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal in accordance with insurance services organization guidelines. Those fire departments are assigned an ISO rating or grade. They range from a Class 1, which is the best, to a Class 10 that they say sometimes is uninsurable. Until tonight, or until recently, not all of our fire departments in Union County were rated. They were rated at a NS, which meets the minimum standards for a fire department in North Carolina. After the award of these four particular ratings, Union County now has every fire department in Union County with a rating of at least a six or better for every home business that's located within five miles, five road miles of their station. So that's significant that the investments the community's made into the fire departments is being returned back to them now. If you could just give me just a second and let me bring each of the fire chiefs up and their president of the Board of Directors. First of all, I'd like to recognize Lanes Creek Fire Department, Chief Robert Sweat, and Board President Mike Whitmire. They were awarded a Class 5. The next one I'd like to recognize is Stack Road Fire Department, Chief Monty Taylor, Board President Eric Hasty. They were awarded a Class 6. Jackson Fire Department with Chief Graham McManus, the Board President Wanda McManus. They were awarded a Class 5. And then Allen's Crossroads, Chief David Smith and their Board President Bill McLaurin. They were awarded a Class 6 as well. Also have Mr. Jeremy Hunt from the Office of State Fire Marshal here. He's the Rating and Inspection Specialist. I'd like to give him just a few minutes to address the board if that's okay with you.
Yes.
Also, we've got President Union County Fire Chiefs Association from Hemby Bridge, Chief Johnny Blythe. Chief Blythe through the Fire Chiefs Association and the fire chiefs in the county looking out for one another, helping each other through the processes of what works, what doesn't. And the most significant thing that was done as a fire service in Union County for global impact was the countywide water hall that every fire department, including the City of Monroe, took part of back in October of last year. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, Commander Watson. My name is Jeremy Hunt. I'm Deputy State Fire Marshal for the Office of the State Fire Marshal here in North Carolina. And on behalf of Mike Causey, our Insurance Commissioner, who is also our State Fire Marshal and Chief State Fire Marshal, Brian Taylor, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and recognize these gentlemen who worked so diligently over the last six to eight months to make sure that they were able to lower that insurance classification. An ISO inspection is not just a simple checklist. An ISO inspection, you can ask any one of them. An ISO inspection has four areas that a fire department is currently graded in North Carolina under the Insurance Services Office side of New Jersey. That rating therefore is a fire department score that looks at their personnel, their apparatus, how a fire department responds to the fire protection area in which they cover. It is water, whether it be a countywide water system, a water plant, a pressurized system, or a static system where they have to go pull that water from lakes, streams, rivers, et cetera. And communications. Communications is an area in which falls under Union County. Just so you know, your communication center scored nine points out of 10, which is well rated in the state of North Carolina. The communication center is rated also, just like the fire department, we look at their personnel, their training, to make sure that they meet all the qualifications that are needed to give the best rating possible. And then we look at community risk reduction. Community risk reduction is an effort of the Fire Marshal's Office as well as the fire department to educate the public in the dangers of fire. We look at the Fire Marshal's Office, for example, we look at their inspections program, their investigations, and we also looked at their fire life safety education, that their outreach that they're doing, just like we do the fire department. Combined, there's a potential of 105.5 points that a fire department can achieve, which would be a Class 1 across the United States. As of today, there are 40,355 fire districts in the United States, 1,520 are right here in North Carolina. These gentlemen standing right here are in the top 60 percentile across the nation right now, being that they're Class 6 and Class 5. That's a major accomplishment for a department, especially going from a Class 9, which was the minimum requirements that the state of North Carolina put on a fire department all the way to where they are today. The average homeowner, based on the criteria of their property, could save anywhere from $150 to $250 annually because of the efforts the fire departments here had. I would like to recognize the water hall, the training these gentlemen done over the last several months across Union County, coming together as one. That in itself, that in itself is probably worth 30% of the overall water grade that they received, being able to move water efficiently and timely. So, in closing with that, again, I commend all of you for going through the process. I think you've done very well, as well as the Commissioner, he sends his regards with that. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak, and thank you for recognizing these gentlemen for all they have done.
Any questions? Good. All right. Well, thank you. Can we get a picture with everybody?
That would be...
Commissioners?
Thank you. Come on up and we'll get a picture.
Go that way.
I don't feel worthy of standing with y'all. I'd like to y'all to sit down and congratulate. Congratulations. We appreciate that. You keep your son on the right. You're welcome. Please, let me get them all together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. We'll get them all together.
Come on, Mark. You've one that's got a L-may view now.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, I have to pick up my badge.
Guys, I was up there last October. Commissioner Hems recommended I go see the water hall, and it was quite impressive. I just appreciate all y'all do. Okay, moving on to informal comments. We had one person sign up, and let me read this little format. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. And we have one person signed up, and it is Lisa Girasi.
Hi. My name's Lisa Girasi, and I live on 3518 Zebulon Williams Road. I'm here to speak to you guys today about the short water line extension project. I, Zebulon Williams and Hagler are right next to each other, and both of them have, like, I got mail saying that I can get a part of the extension project if I wanted to, but you have to get your water tested beforehand for the application. And I got my water tested. It was $170 to get it tested, and it showed that my well was contaminated. It's three times the level of arsenic allowed in water. It's not drinkable, but you can bathe in it. And a lot of the people on the street have the same situation, like the whole street. I think 14 houses have the well application that went through and said that theirs was contaminated. And as for the other people that did not apply, I don't know if they know it or not, but their well's probably contaminated as well. Anyway, so I knew that I had to do the short line extension project. However, I got a bill in the mail. It's $2,522, and they want that money upfront July 7th before you go through with the project, and if you don't pay it, they remove you from the project. And I just wanted the board to think or reconsider the idea of making that a little different because that's a lot of money to pay out of pocket before the project is even formed, like, before the services are rendered. The pipe hasn't been through there at all. And right now, I'm a teacher, I'm a single mom, I don't really have the $2,500 to do it, but I need to. Like, I'll put it on credit card if I have to, but I would love if they could consider either, like, waiving the fee or putting it in with the water bill once it becomes available, or like, doing an installment plan or monthly payments or something else. And that's what I wanted y'all to consider today for not only me, but the rest of the people, because I think only 30 people out of the 105 people have paid for their project, and it's a $5 million project, so like, I mean, that would be like $262,000 for all of the cost sharing. And like, if nobody does it, and there's only 30 people that do it, and you're paying $5 million, but, you know, it just doesn't make much sense to not hit all of those homes. Plus, the homes that didn't get the water application, I feel like there should be like a little informational bulletin given to them, maybe offering them a second opportunity to look into it because they might not know that their water is contaminated. And that's what I'm asking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll take what you said under advisement and discuss it with our staff.
Thanks.
Okay, now we're gonna have a public hearing on sewer service area boundaries. And Brian?
Yes, sir.
Make the president.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. What you have here tonight are actually two public hearings. One, they're both related to sewer service areas. One is related to the map, creating sewer service areas. The other one is the ordinance, which actually governs how that works. The first one here is about the proposed service area maps. Just to give you some context or some history, the board last dealt with sewer service boundaries in the 2011 Water and Sewer Master Plan, as well as the update to the master plan in 2016. So that's the last time that the Board of County Commissioners actually adopted anything that had sewer service boundaries in it. We are currently going through an update to our master plan now, but it's scheduled to be several months out before that's completed. It is important for us as far as planning to go is to have an idea of where the board would like to see service ultimately be located within the county. So what we presented here, what we'll show you, are the changes that we are recommending you consider for those sewer service boundaries. And we'll also talk about how that is impacted if you're outside of those as well. So as I said, the little history is it started in 2011, updated in 2016. There are general things that we use. We plan it for capacity. It's also helped us with our comp plan. Our 2050 comp plan was used in developing these locations for the sewer service boundaries. And then ultimately, the board has some role to play in how service is done outside of that. So this is the original boundary. This is what came out of 2011 and the 2016 plan, and as you can see, they're broken up into what we call service areas. They're named usually by either the wastewater treatment plant or the area in general. And they're rather large. That does not mean that there's sewer in every one of those areas. It's just boundaries at this point. Some of those areas have absolutely no sewer service in them, but this was what was identified previously. And I know this isn't easy to see, but if you can see the darker areas, which is kind of a gray, that represents where the municipalities are within those sewer service boundaries. So you can also see that a number of those are predominantly made up by municipal areas, and then others are all unincorporated counties. So it's a mix. But then if you look at the actual sewer lines, this is what is telling. You can see that Lake Lee, there aren't really any sewer lines in Lake Lee. Lake Twitty, very similar. And then there's very little around the east side. So most of your sewer is on this western side of the county between Poplin, Crooked Creek, 12 Mile and 6 Mile. That's where most of our sewer service is located. So in looking at our growth projections and looking at how we move forward with sewer service, we thought that what might be beneficial is to pare that back. And so this is really what's being proposed for sewer service boundaries today. And as you can see, and I'll show a slide later that gives you more detail of what was removed, but there's a great deal that is not shown. We've trimmed back the east side, so it really only covers the area that's mostly what we serve. Same thing with Grassy Branch. It's really mostly what we serve. We've even cut back some of the 12 Mile, Poplin area, and then eliminated Lake Lee and Lake Twitty as those areas, because we don't intend that there'll be sewer service in there anytime in the future. So again, the look at it from a municipal perspective, the gray are the municipal boundaries. You can see where they're located in relation to those current boundaries and those proposed boundaries. And then our sewer service actual lines, you can see they're represented in the areas mostly that we're showing as far as the boundaries we're recommending. Telling me I don't have enough time, so. So, this is where I was gonna show you the difference here, and as you can see, the difference is significant. 2016, total, the total areas has dropped significantly. 12 Mile is reduced by 33% to Poplin 12 Mile. Richardson Creek, we've reduced it by 100%. We've completely gotten rid of the Richardson Creek area. Lake Twitty and Lake Lee completely removed those areas from the sewer service boundaries. And then the east side, we've reduced that significantly as well. And we think this is more appropriate as to what your system will do and grow within the next few years of your master plan. Of course, the board always has the ability to amend your plan and amend your sewer service boundaries. These are not static. Once you adopt them, you have the ability to change them at any point in time if you wish to. But we think this is more indicative of what your growth areas will be for sewer service. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions specifically about the boundary side of it. There is a corresponding component for the ordinance, which is up next as a different public hearing, but that is what we have for you tonight. As far as this public hearing, later on in the meeting, there is a section where the board can take action on that if you like. That is up to you if you choose to decide to take action on both this sewer service boundaries as well as the ordinance, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Rushen.
That doesn't, okay, for the example like the Lake Lee or Richardson Creek and those areas, if Monroe wanted to annex, voluntarily annex into those areas, they could.
Absolutely.
And they could serve it, but it just, and they would or would not have to have our permission to do that.
No, since they're not in our service, if the board chooses to remove those, they're no longer in our service areas. They don't have to come to us for permission for that.
So Monroe could choose to take it in and do whatever.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Brian, I believe Monroe has already put a sewer line around Lake Twitty.
They may very well have.
And basically ask everybody to switch over.
And honestly, it's, those areas are probably better served by municipalities anyway.
Right.
We're so far away from it, it would be extremely costly for us to serve it.
And part of Lake Lee's already been done that way. I know Bridgewater is on Monroe's.
It's on Monroe, okay. Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing. Ordinance amending chapter 34 of the Union County Code Sewer Service Area Boundaries. Recognize Brian Matthews.
Thank you. So again, what's where your consideration is tied? Yes, sir. Sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Need to allow the public to speak if they want to. My mistake.
I'm sorry. Is there anybody who wants to speak in that public hearing against it? Okay. Hearing none, I will close that public hearing. You all right now? You look kinda ill. Keep me straight. All right, keep straight. Okay, now I will open the public hearing on ordinance amending chapter 24.
34.
34 of the Union County Code Sewer Service Area Boundaries.
Yes, sir. So our water and sewer ordinance actually identifies our service boundaries, and one of the things that the board wanted to have more involvement on are decisions about how sewer service is provided, if provided, outside of sewer boundaries. And that was not really clear or spelled out in our previous ordinance. So they asked US staff to come back with some amendments that would take that into consideration. How would the board have some role to play in approving or denying service that's outside of boundaries? Obviously, if it's inside the boundaries, there's a mechanism that people have to follow to go inside the boundaries, but outside's a little bit different. So what we have here for the board is actually the ordinance to allow for how service boundaries operate, as well as how the board has a role to play in decisions for that. And that is the creation of Section 5 of our ordinance, or 34-501 through 34-531 are all new sections of our ordinance, which talk about how there are procedures to go about when you're inside the district or the service area and when you are outside the service area. And I really want to talk more about the outside because I think that's really important. So I'm gonna go to the section there. So, this is all about the applicability, purpose, intent, but really, when you get to the meat of it, it is Section 531, right here, where it talks about wastewater connections outside the service area. The way this currently works is that if someone submitted a project and the staff determined that that project was outside of a sewer service boundary, staff would say, oh, you actually have to make application to the board. We take their information, we create a report. That report identifies, can it be served, how can it be served, some other detailed information about the engineering side of it. That comes then to the board. The board would make a utility-based decision on whether or not you felt that that was appropriate or not to serve that. One other important component of that is, is it also inside a municipality? So, is this area inside a municipality but outside of a service area? We also ask the municipality to weigh in and give you a recommendation on whether they think that project should be served even though it's outside the service boundary. That is only a recommendation. It is not a decision. They don't have that authority. The board only has that authority. So we would get a recommendation from the municipality, we would give the board a report, the board would then weigh that information, and you would make a decision, yes, we will serve that, no, we will not serve that. And that is all spelled out in how this ordinance would operate in the future. Obviously, the boards can make changes to the ordinance if we see that something's not working correctly. You know, when we adopt ordinances, there's always something that we don't think about that we may have to come and tweak in the future, but I do believe that this gets at the point that the board wanted, and that is your role to play in anything that is outside of a sewer service boundary. Inside a sewer service boundary, those decisions don't come to the board. If you can follow the process to make connections, then you can make connections. That is, however, pumping. Pumping is different. If you have to pump in order to be able to be served, that decision still has to come to the board for a decision. Gravity connections do not come to the board for decisions. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
Anybody wishing to speak as part of the public hearing for or against this? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing on 22-331. Okay, now onto staff recognition. We've got May Service Award recipients. Ashley Hems at the library, five years. Stephen Ellis, Public Works, five years. Jennifer Baldwin, Tax Administration, five years. Jerry Harrington, Public Works, 10 years. Sheila, Stella Hucks, Register of Deeds, 15 years. Lauren Lahelaru, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Sandra McCoy, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Sandra Smith, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. John Williams, Fire Marshal's Office, 20 years. Danetra Allen, Sheriff's Office, 25 years. Brian Hunke, Sheriff's Office, 25 years. And retirements, Lori Whitney, Social Services, 19 years. Thank you to all these employees. All right, now, we move on to consent agenda.
Gravity connections do not come to the board for decisions. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have any.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak as part of the public hearing for or against this? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing on 22-331. Okay, now onto staff recognition. We've got May Service Award recipients. Ashley Hales at the library, five years. Stephen Ellis, Public Works, five years. Jennifer Baldwin, Tax Administration, five years. Jerry Harrington, Public Works, 10 years. Sheila, Stella Hucks, Register of Deeds, 15 years. Lauren Lahelaru, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Sandra McCoy, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Sandra Smith, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. John Williams, Fire Marshal's Office, 20 years. DeNetra Allen, Sheriff's Office, 25 years. Brian Hunky, Sheriff's Office, 25 years. And retirements, Lori Whitney, Social Services, 19 years. Thank you to all these employees. All right, now, we move on to consent agenda. And we are, board members, we're going to move that the board defer action on item 22-319. I believe we're still waiting on.
That's part of regular business, Chairman.
Okay. All right. All right, consent agenda then. Any additions or deletions? Or if not, I'll take a motion. Got a motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sewer service area boundaries. I'd like to open this up for discussion. I believe I want to read this thing. Any comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Simpson. I mean, I robustly, wholeheartedly support adoption of these boundaries. I know prior to today, we kind of have aspirational boundaries, but this is going to give the county teeth in its ordinance. And what I mean by that is, we're going to require that any development proposed outside of our service areas get board approval first. And I think it's high time that we do this, and I think it's going to do a lot in terms of creating predictability. Predictability for the course of development, patterns of development, predictability in terms of cost of capital projects, capital expenditures. And I, again, wholeheartedly support adoption of these boundaries. Thank you.
Commissioner Simpson.
I would just say, well said, Commissioner Williams. I would ask Brian, there were some significant reductions that we noticed.
Yes, sir.
Is that from a serviceability or did the 2050 plan input have any impact on any of that?
Let me pull that up.
What were some of the factors that went into reducing those boundaries?
Absolutely. So it actually was a combination of both. It was a combination of ability to serve. So if you look at Lake Lee and Lake Twitty and as the chairman brought up, there are other municipalities, there are other agencies that are serving within there, and it really doesn't make any sense for us to run lines and run service in those areas when it's not easy and it's certainly not inexpensive for us to do that. So that was a factor. But also, the board adopted recently your 2050 comprehensive plan. And in that plan, very similar to what they've done with, what we're requesting you do with the service areas, is we actually reduced the areas for which we identify as medium density development. They were identified in our previous comp plan as being medium density development, and we actually scaled that back to now those areas are relatively small, and we've identified mostly rural unserved areas for the rest of the county. And so we tried to mirror that within your sewer service boundaries so that our growth projections are really trying to really stipulate that growth is mostly around the municipalities and not in the unincorporated areas, or at least not higher density growth in the unincorporated areas. So that was, both of those things were taken into consideration when we were making this request.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rush.
I agree also. Think this is a great idea of focusing things in where people can look at, the towns can see what's going on. The only thing that I could think of when you were reading through and going through, like the municipalities having to come and ask, you know, about being included if we didn't serve that, is maybe also considering the schools, but that can be later on, you know, do the schools have a weigh-in on what kind of capacity issues they have within those areas as well?
Certainly.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion. We approve 22-320 as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve this boundaries issue. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Ordinance amending the, I'm sorry. All right, the next one, ordinance amending Chapter 34 of the Union County Code. Brian, you want to speak to that?
It's the same ordinance.
Any questions? Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
All right, have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to 22-227 Lead and Copper Compliance Program Management Agreement. Andy Neal from Public Works.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This evening, we'll discuss briefly the upcoming EPA's proposed lead and copper rule revisions. They're pretty extensive, lengthy, and complicated. And the briefing I'm about to give you really doesn't do justice to the extent to which the changes are forthcoming. There's a copy of this briefing in your agenda package for reference. And I would also like to add at this point, just maybe more of a philosophical point, in a utility, we are governed by regulations. We're largely driven by them, and this is a good example of it. We either are directly influenced by the regulations, or if we don't do something, it's going to become regulatory. So if we don't maintain and repair the system, then we're going to have regulatory issues down the road, and just wanted to alert you to that. So this evening, we'll cover, give you an overview of the rule. We'll discuss some of the key areas. We'll give you an idea of how we want to proceed with compliance, which is due on October 16, 2024. And then we also have a request in front of you. We're going to ask that you approve an agreement with CDM Smith to give us assistance with what we're going to have to do to become compliant in October of '24. So in general, lead isn't commonly found in water. It is leached off of the plumbing networks and buildings and piping. And normally, the way we handle, we control it, is there's an inhibitor, there's a corrosion inhibitor that is introduced in the plant, in this case, in either an Anson or a Kataba, and it's an orthophosphate, and it essentially coats the pipes so that it prevents any kind of leaching off of lead or copper or other metals off the walls of the pipe inside a building. And normally, when it's not sufficient, we have to make adjustments to it. And that is also a part of this rule I'll go over. In terms of the timeline, the actual lead and copper rule went into effect in 1991. And it's been modified ever since, and this is the biggest change that is forthcoming with the rule. And this is largely driven by what happened in Flint, Michigan, if you've been following that. They're very serious about really getting lead out of the network of piping that the utility has or the homeowner has. We currently monitor, under the old rule, we've had very good results. We are usually very low. We have very low detect levels for copper. We have very low or non-detect for lead in our system. So we don't think we have a huge problem, but we are going to have to do a lot of work because of the extensive nature of this rule. We are on reduced sampling, so we sample every three years. When the new rule comes into effect, we're going to have to sample annually until we can prove, again, that we don't have an issue with lead or copper in our system. We do, with reduced sampling, we do 50 samples every three years. Normal sampling is 100 samples a year. As I mentioned earlier, the effective, well, I didn't mention earlier, but the effective date of the rule is December 16th, so it's basically in place. But the compliance date is October 16 of 2024. So that's the date that we have to have everything ready to go to be compliant with the rule, and they're going to say, they're going to ask us certain questions at that point, and we need to make sure that we're ready to answer those positively. There's also some anticipated changes that may happen over that period of time until we need to be compliant. EPA is looking at making some changes themselves, and there's also been some litigation. The Natural Resources Defense Council and the Sierra Club have challenged EPA in, particularly in setting the limit of how much lead is acceptable in the rule. So that has yet to play out. So there may yet be some changes that we have to deal with moving forward. This diagram shows a house and covers, from the bottom of the slide where the water main is, where my cursor is, with the line, the service line moving into the house. So from the main to the meter is typically the utility's responsibility. From the meter to the house is the customer's, and the rule is going to require us to examine that and see what those materials are. You can see at the water main, there's what they call a lead gooseneck. We don't think we have any of these, but in older systems, it's pretty common to have a lead gooseneck and a connection to the water main. That could be a source of problems with lead. Inside the house, you have galvanized pipe that can leach off particulate matter, faucets, and copper piping, which is common with lead-based solder, which has been eliminated back in the 80s. So these are all potential sources of lead in a particular household. Health effects? I think we all know that lead causes developmental problem in children, and that's really the intention of this rule, to really focus on children and its impact. For adults, cardiovascular effects, blood pressure, decreased kidney functions. For copper, for children, mostly stomach issues. For adults, liver disease, anemia, and disrupted kidney functions. Now, again, I want to stress that in our examination of our system, we haven't seen these to be issues at this point. Some highlights of the rule. As I mentioned, they, it began in 2005 and were promulgated last year. They, they're adding a trigger level. So right now, the way the lead rule works is you have an action level of 15 parts per billion. They're adding a trigger level of 10 parts per billion. That requires you to take certain actions at 10 before you even hit 15. Now, these are parts per billion. It's very small, very small measurements. It's 10 to the minus nine power. So to give you some idea, like a part per billion is like taking an eyedropper and dropping a drop in a swimming pool. Or, if you like potato chips, taking a pinch of salt and putting it in a 10-ton bag of potato chips. That's the level that we're talking about in terms of a part per billion, what it is. But we're going to have to develop a service line inventory. That's one of the big issues we're going to have to contend with. And if we find leaded pipes, we're going to have to do a lead service line replacement plan as part of the rule. One of the new issues is, we're going to have to do lead sampling at schools and childcare facilities as part of this. We'll have to do a find and fix program. Find it, take care of it. And there's changes to sampling locations, protocols, cross connection, I mean corrosion control, study requirements. And a big component of this is public education and outreach, which we'll work with our communications team on moving forward. So I want to cover these six key areas very quickly, just kind of run through them. We'll start with the most impacted areas. So the diagram over here to the right is what I was talking about earlier with the diagram of the house. We are going to have to identify, according to the rule, every service connection, what we have in our system from the pipe to the meter and from the meter to the house. We're going to have to know what that material is. There's a lot of unknowns at this point. The state has not issued any guidance on how they're going to implement this rule yet, but we need to be prepared in the worst case to identify that material. We're hoping that there can be a more statistical-type analysis done to determine what that pipe material is based on what you can spot-check in certain areas and then make assumptions over. But none of that is clear at this point. The pipes are going to be categorized in four different categories. Either you have a lead service line, you have a galvanized requiring replacement, which means you have a galvanized line going from the meter to the house, could be preceded by a lead line that we own, or an unknown line, which makes it imperative that we know what that material is. Because if it's not known under this rule, you have to treat it as lead. So it's an extreme case, but what EPA is doing is forcing everyone to understand what they have in their system and to get all the lead out of it. You can have a non-lead line. Most of our lines are copper. I don't think there's a lot of polybutylene out there, but most of our connections, our service lines, are copper. And then you have lead, lead status unknown. There's no documentation behind it. So we're going to have to pay particular attention to what the service line material is going in each house. They're going to require strengthening of treatment requirements, so we're going to have to evaluate our existing corrosion control system. So this means that we would have to evaluate the dosing of orthophosphate to coat the pipes. We're going to have to possibly make pH adjustments or alkalinity adjustments to make sure that the orthophosphate can work in its optimal state. That's going to be a requirement. And I mentioned replacing lead service lines. So if you hit the trigger level, you have to work with your state to establish goals on replacements. If you're hitting the action level, which is considered a health risk, we have to have a replacement of 3% of all those lines annually in the system. Now, again, we don't think we have this in the system, but this is what the rule is telling us. And if we do this, we have to provide filters and post-replacement sampling for any line that we disturb or remove. And we have to do all this by October, we have to have a plan in place by October 16, 2024. Improving communication. So this is the regulatory requirement. So if we exceed the action level of 15 parts per billion, we have 24 hours to notify the customer or the customers affected. If we exceed the trigger level of 10 parts per billion, we have to promptly implement efforts to control the lead. So we have to start looking at the corrosion control. We have to start sampling in the area. We have to start seeing what's going on with that and inform customers within 30 days of the end of the monitoring period, and then again annually. The customers need access to this information. It needs to be on our website. We need to have handouts for customers. There's a lot of communication with technicians that's going to occur as this rolls out. And we're going to have to put this information in the Consumer Confidence Report, which we publish annually every July. We're going to have to increase sampling. We're going to have to do more sampling if we're exceeding the trigger and action levels under the rules. So we're going to continually try to find where the lead is coming from and react to it. Now, here's a big one. This has not been in place before, but a lot of this rule is focused on protecting children. So for the first time, we're going to be required to go into the schools, certainly elementary schools, and childcare centers and test for lead and copper in those facilities under this rule. We have to do it over five years, 20% per year. We did, to be proactive, we went out last summer and we worked with the school board, their facilities department, to take a look at what was in the schools. We checked 42 schools. We did a sample in each, and we did not detect an issue working with the school system. And we also understand they had said that they had changed out some of their plumbing too, so we feel pretty confident that we should be good there. So our approach is, we issued an RFP. We had three proposals come back for help with understanding the rule, developing what we have to develop to be compliant by October 16th to 2024, with the biggest issue being that we have to do this inventory, and we have 58,000 connections to the system. So it's a huge lift. So we're going to need some assistance in order to help us gear up to become compliant in October of 2024. in October of '24. So our ask of you this evening is to approve the multi-year agreement with CDM Smith in the amount of, it's actually a not-to-exceed $291,240 to, to help us with the, with the program, getting the program implemented. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Rushen.
So are we going to go into people's homes and test the water in the home, or we're going to test it, how we're going to test it?
Good question, and I, I should have said that as, as part of our program. This is a different kind of rule. Normally, what we do is we'll sample in the mains. So we'll go out with our bacteriological samples in mains or disinfection byproducts, that kind of thing. This is sort of an intrusive program where you actually do knock on a door. This is part of the whole communications program we're going to have to develop. We do this now. We have people that are selected, they, they'll volunteer to work with us in areas where there's potential lead issues now. And we hand them a bottle. They'll go, there's instructions on how to take the sample. They'll go to their faucet, they'll pull the sample, they'll come back, they'll give it to us, we'll tag it, then it's a chain of custody to get it to the lab and get it processed and put on the books.
So let's say that our materials at the road are fine, but the materials inside the house are not. Do we go back and test again? And if they still have it after we've done whatever we need to do, do, are they going to have to replace the pipes in their house, or what?
Well, I think, potentially, but I think that's a worst-case scenario. I think the issue will be, we'll have to go through a series of steps, you know? So the, the easiest step is, is there a corrosion control problem? You know, can we make adjustments to, to stop that from happening? Do they have a lead service line? So we'll go through a replacement program to, to pull out any lead pipe that we may come across or identify what the pipe material is. Also, I mentioned that we've been doing this now for years, and we haven't really seen high lead levels in, in homes. So we're on reduced sampling, you know, we haven't really seen the issue. So we don't expect that there's going to be like a worst-case kind of scenario come up out of this.
Because, because I guess what I'm, you know, I just remember the lady that spoke during public comments, you know, if somebody would have to do something drastic, like go in and replace lines in their home, at what cost? And is there any assistance available to help people like that to do something of that nature? And should we try to create some type of fund for people that are in the shape she was in, or, you know, because she said, I think she said, three times the level of arsenic that she was allowed. You know, is there a way of maybe creating a fund for people like that that needed assistance to offset the cost? Because I know that it has to be paid, but, you know, where they could pay it off over a year or two period of time?
So there's, there's, it's another good point. There's a lot of money coming under the Infrastructure Act. Under that act, there's $15 billion being given out to states for the lead and copper rule, particularly to get lead pipes out of the system. So I think there's going to be opportunity moving down the road to leverage some of that money if we need to, to help customers deal with the issue. Thank you.
Andy, what, the other three utilities, water utilities in the county, Monroe, Wingate, and Marshville, are all subject to the same rules and requirements?
They are.
And those are, some of those are relatively old systems?
Yes, Monroe is obviously older than us. And, and I talked to Russ, a little bit, Russ Kolbath, and he doesn't think he's got a, too much of a problem. But I think that we need to be, the rule requires us to be certain, so it remains to be seen. We're all going to have to probe and find out and make sure that we know what we got.
Any other questions? Commissioner Haynes.
That 291,000 for CDM Smith?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to sample 58,000 homes, or?
Potentially. Again, this, this rule is evolving, even as I briefed you on it this evening. I mentioned the litigation, and, and we have no word from the state on what they're going to allow. So CDM has done work for Fayetteville Public Utilities and Raleigh and other large utilities. They have a lot of experience so far working with this. So I think that we're going to have to be flexible. It's a not-to-exceed amount, so we're just going to have to be flexible with how we approach it with CDM and make sure that we're going to be compliant.
Now, my understanding is that you're going to have to go to the meter and go on the house side of the meter and dig in and see what kind of pipe it is?
Yes, potentially. Whether that's spot-checking or whether that's total, we don't know yet.
Okay. It's a bag of snakes.
It's a, it's a huge lift. It is.
Any more discussion? Well, they're needing a motion. And this will basically help y'all get the program kicked off. Is that right, Andy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make the motion, authorize county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. All in favor?
I think this one's just.
Okay.
I don't mean to be funny. I'm not, I'm giggling about asking the question, but I don't mean to be funny. But if we checked our sewer and we didn't have parts per million, would that not be a, a quick indication if we got a problem or not?
Well, we already, I mean, we already checked the water system, right? I mean, so we're, we're in reduced sampling. We're checking the water system every three years, 50 samples, in areas that the rule, the current rule requires us to go into areas where it's suspected.
Right.
So from that data, I would suggest that we don't think we have, we have a huge hurdle here, but we're required to identify everything.
Can, can that, I mean, can that even be done? I mean, I-
Well, it could be done.
For example, Marshville.
Right.
Could Marshville check at the sewer connection? And, and if they don't have a problem there, it would seem that they wouldn't have a problem anywhere. Or is this a specific house-by-house basis? Because if it is, what he just said about checking all the homes is going to be, you're going to check every house regardless.
Right.
So it's like an all-or-nothing type thing, it sounds to me.
Andy, just to clarify though, we don't have an option. We have to check the water at each house.
Right.
And we got a due date to get it done by. This is a very broad sweeping and yet to be known how well-funded. As you said, there appears to be infrastructures coming, but, and, and I don't really understand how we're responsible past the meter, but those are the rules that we're dealing with, correct?
Yes.
So if they find lead or copper in the house, I imagine rules will be coming down at a later date of how to deal with it, even though our responsibility supposedly stops where they hook onto the meter.
Correct. But the rule becomes a little bit more intrusive, because it's taking us into the service line to the house.
Right. They're telling us we've got to check it all.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, do we have to check houses that are on wells?
No, these are houses on our system.
So they don't care about the houses on the wells?
Well, this, right. It's, the lead and copper rule goes to public utility systems.
So then we are only responsible to the meter.
Under the rule, we also have to check the service line to the house. We have to know what that material is. We do. And to go to your question on Marshville, Marshville also follows the same current rule. I mean, they have their own data.
And I, and I was just using that for an example.
Right.
Because it's a, it's a separate system that could be suspect, as you said, an older aging system.
Right.
Just like Wingate could also be probably checked there.
Right.
But it just, this could be, but there's monies available coming. It's just not going to be an unfunded mandate.
Right. That was part of the Infrastructure Act, to put a lot of money into lead service lines.
Okay.
We're, we're not going to make any promises that obviously we'll get money. There's money available, and if we identify that we have to replace service lines, then we will certainly make every effort to get some of that state money, but it's up to them to actually award that money. So yet, we're, we'll make every effort, but we can't make any promises.
Andy, as it was explained to me, and I, I probably failed here not getting it out to the other members, this basically will be for them to come in and get us a template of how to do it and how to start it. And they may do some of it for us, but it's really, we don't have an option. We've got to do it.
Right. And it's also the management of the data, right? We're going to have to create this huge data set, and then we're going to have to publish all this information. It's going to be publicly available, so somebody can go on the web and go, okay, what's my address and what do I have? So it's all part of the rule.
And truth of the matter, if we start have some popping up, this is going, this is for the benefit of their, the people that own the house. Any more discussion? We got a motion to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Andy. Okay. A general report of activity from Monroe Union County Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity to provide you with an update. It has been timely, or we've needed to do this for some time, but with COVID, it kind of slipped. But it's also timely in the sense that we're ending the year, but also starting a new era with economic development. So this is going to also wrap up the joint venture between the city of Monroe and Union County at the same time. How did we get here? Back in 2006 and 2009, we tried to, there was an effort to look at merging the two entities, and unfortunately, those failed due to political silos or whatever reason. In 2012, it took the late Clark Goodwin and Commissioner Simpson to sit down and talk, and then they brought in Lynn Kaziah. And as a result of that, we had an interlocal agreement go through, and it changed the trajectory for economic development in the county from that point on. This is what we affectionately refer to as the dating period. So we had about two and a half years of being together to make sure that this interlocal would work. Then we decided to get married. And so we put that together in a codified agreement that had extensions built into it. We had three one-year extensions that came about. And so within that timeframe, it was, it gave us the ability to plan for the new entity. We also, something I'm extremely proud of, is merging the two entities has saved the taxpayers combined between city and county $3.6 million over this period. And even with the new entity, the budget is still less than the combined efforts were in 2012. So after we got married, we had a baby. And so here it is, the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission going forward. A lot has happened since January of 13. The civilian labor force, which is the, the actual adults that are in the working age that are willing to go out and work, has increased roughly 20% over that timeframe, 21,000 people. At the same time, we were able to reduce the tack, the unemployment rate. So as a result, there's, we actually have more people working than we actually had come into the labor force. So that was that reduction. When you look at labor force to employment rate, as the population grows, you would, you would assume that the unemployment rate would kind of correlate with that, keeping roughly about the same percentage. In our case, it's more divergent, which is extremely hard to do for a community. You have to have an extremely strong economy to accomplish that. So if you look at Union County, again, since January of 13, you can see that civilian labor force growth outside of the anomaly related to COVID. And so at the same time, you see in the red line it going down. So again, over that time, you have that diverging lines, which is extremely hard to do. So again, we had a two-thirds reduction in the unemployment rate while the same time receiving a 20% increase in the labor force. Looking at it, and again, this is a sign of an incredibly robust economy. And so we want to narrow it down now to look at, since January of '20, looking at where COVID hit. So you can see the COVID recession period is right there. Those people did not disappear. We've talked about this at the EDC board meetings. For some reason, they were not calculated, for, again, for whatever reason, they did not just vanish. And you can see, as the, the labor force picked back up, that they're still there. If you took that number at what the labor force should be and the unemployment rate at the time, our effective unemployment rate was over 20%. That was incredible blow to this economy, and to come back and be at 2.8% right now just shows again how robust our local economy is across all sectors. And then just to give you an idea of how we look in the region, this is just a snapshot of the most recent. We're the lowest, again, two tenths of a percent below our, our closest competitor in the unemployment rate race. And again, that's Lincoln County, which is like a third of our size, so it's not even really a true comparison. So, and we have maintained the lowest unemployment rate for about 20 years now in the Charlotte region. So to get there, we've been a, a part of that story of building that economy, and so there's a lot of office activities that go along that the taxpayers have funded with our entity. And so one is we have a premier existing industry program. Ron Mill runs that and is by far viewed as one of the top in the state. People come here and want to emulate what he does here. And so with this, we have seminars, we do wage surveys, we have our industry appreciation days. It's that relationship. He runs the job-ready committee right now for Union County. So we're very tied in to the existing industries in ways that most communities are not. And again, our program, that's where my career started, was with the existing industry. Ron has done that in Cleveland before he came here. So his whole career has been building existing industry programs and keeping that attention on those customers that we already have. And that's the focus of our program. That's first. Then we want to add to that. And so we can't just sit there and hope that the existing industries will do that on their own. We have to go out and create those opportunities, go find ways to make it grow. So how do we do that? We go where the projects are. So over the last nine and a half years, we have been throughout the United States and in Western Europe, finding projects, bringing them here. And so it takes an effort, a very distinct strategy to go out and do that. Due to COVID, we were sort of stuck in the office, and so finally, we're back on the road again. And so we've already been to, three of the four that we've been to is agribusiness, food systems-focused. So Snacks Poe was in Charlotte. The International Poultry Production Show was, was in Atlanta just recently. We went with Andrew Balkum accompanying us to that. And then coming up is the Food Show in Chicago, and then Farnborough over in the UK. We're also out there trying to make sure people know about us, you know, out of sight, out of mind. So we're out in social media, print media, you know, even things like our little Unite Us, to kind of talk about facts in the county, as well as podcasts, something that we'd never thought we'd ever do. Then there's the traditional product development, whether it's spec building development, industrial park planning, brownfield redevelopment, something to make sure that we have product here when a client needs that, that that's available. We're also, again, the work of economic development is changing under our feet, so we're having to go and to look into other specialty kind of product development. And so the Winchester development, excuse me, redevelopment is going on in downtown Monroe, and so in a more urban area, trying to find areas that we can bring back to viability. We're looking at, and we just completed this with land design and 505 architecture, is a Union County industrial building concept that would work both in Western Union County as well in the Wingate area. And so it's a flex space design, and so we'll look to eventually get that drawn and turn into a virtual spec building, so that people can- into a virtual spec building so that people can go ahead and buy that permitted building and start construction right away. Also, looking at innovative ways to help the farm industry. In the food systems side, being close to Wingate is the barn concept, so we're still focusing on that and trying to find private sector support to help us create that entity. We've also created new economic development incentive programs, from the commercial infrastructure improvement grants to the airport incentive, as well as magnet, which has set us apart from everybody else. It's one of the most innovative incentive programs as stated by Collins Aerospace and other folks. So the magnet has been something that's set us apart and is still being looked at by our industries to take advantage of. We've created a 501(c)(3), something else that would provide the flexibility that we need to do the job sometimes, and activities that would not be funded by government, so we go and seek private funding to come in to an entity on the side, and they would assist with that. It's also given us the flexibility to work with multiple municipalities. So City of Monroe and Indian Trail have contracted with the Edge to then contract with retail strategies for retail initiative for those two communities. So it runs through that organization, and it just streamlines the process. And the Edge is also, or excuse me, this example is just another example of how we all, we have also worked with the other municipalities. Stallings, we've created their economic development plan, we've worked with Indian Trail. Currently, we've worked with Waxaw and definitely with the Town and Gown or the Town Development Initiative that Wingate has with Wingate University. Again, all of that work, if you don't have results, what's the point? So we believe in focusing on the results. This year has been incredibly busy, and so this is just some example of what's happening right now in the last, since July of 2021. We've had 145 projects come through the door, that's over 200% of our annual goal, and you can see there the makeup of those projects. Union County is by far a precision manufacturing place, but agribusiness has always sits a solid number two, and we're looking with some of those initiatives that we have in place, hopefully we'll grow that. The school system is getting involved, as well as South Piedmont and Wingate University has already been to the table with us, with the agribusiness, so we're looking to grow that the same way we did the aerospace. If you look at the pipeline, the active pipeline right now, we have 49 projects, 13 are announced this year, and so again, you see that makeup where logistics has started to climb up in our active pipeline, primarily because of the expressway now, so we have a viable road that logistics can function off of. So those 13 projects so far, we still have one more in the hopper that should announce before the end of the year. We're at $295 million. That is, again, almost 500% of goal. We anticipate that our final number will end at $337 million, which will be by far the best year Union County's ever had. We have 740 jobs announced, we'll probably add another 200 to that number with the other project. So it'll be close to 1,000 jobs created. So over time, you can see from 2013, sort of the wave that kind of goes up and down is we fill a pipeline, and then we announce a bunch of projects. We fill the pipelines, and so it's nice to see '21 and '22, even with all the headwinds of COVID and inflation and everything else that we have been able to achieve this, again, strength to the competitiveness that Union County possesses. It's that, that is our strength. And so we're sitting here at $1.17 billion. Now, that'll be over 1.2 before the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, and then about 3,200 jobs will be announced at that time. So if you look at that, our goal is 60 jobs, 60 million investment per year and 300 jobs per year. We have doubled our annual goal for the entire span of the contracts that we've had with the interlocal agreement at about 120 million a year, and we've got 330 jobs created every year. So we've exceeded goal in every category across the board. So now the baby. So we're starting anew, so we hit the refresh button. The Economic Development Commission has been accepted by elders as a unit of government, and we are very excited to be moving forward into this fashion and having that joint control by the city of Monroe and Union County so that it's now, we're emancipated out from underneath Monroe, and we're standalone, and so we're looking forward to that. There's a lot of work to still be done, a couple of things to tie up. We've got to get our budget process worked out, and we'll be ready to go on July 1. So with that, if there's any questions about what we've accomplished over this time, any questions about the interlocal agreement versus the new commission, I'm here to answer any of those.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the, with that low of an unemployment rate, is that a factor in recruiting industry to come here? Just for how many people, I mean, I guess we can attract people from other counties that have a higher unemployment rates, but is that something that gives you any difficulty when you?
It, it limits the targets that you go after, so you wouldn't necessarily go for, that's the reason logistics is not a big target for us. We needed some of those, but you don't need, like Rowan and Cabarrus County have just enormous amounts of distribution. They gobble up a lot of workers, and they don't pay very well. And so our strategy is to focus on small numbers of employment, high wage, high capital investment.
Right.
And then really low water sewer, high electric.
Right. And then, do you, do you have a breakdown, because I heard a complaint recently about how we're not helping some other towns, you know, it's mainly Monroe and Union County, and that's what's perceived maybe by some of the businesses in the other towns. Do you have a listing of the new industries and the people that are coming in, into those, each town? Do you have it broken out by town?
We do. We anticipate that complaint because people don't really pay attention to what we do in some of their towns, and so we're very, we're armed to fight that criticism because it is spread throughout the county.
Right.
There is a, you've got to look at what Monroe has done, for one thing.
Right.
Monroe's invested and built product. You can't just sit there and have your arms crossed and wish things would happen. Some of these towns need to contribute to the process, and so that's where Union County has contributed to its fate and is doing some things with, you know, its industrial parks. Monroe has done that. You're seeing that now, like with Stallings looking to, you know, get involved and have their work, their economic development plan codified. You're looking at Waxaw interested clearly what Wingate is doing and what they're doing with the university there, is now that product is starting to happen. Indian Trail at the same, same point, we've got property there, but their focus has been residential for a long time, too. So it, it, we can't do everything. We need, you know, to have product to sell, and if they're not going to zone property correctly, or if they're not going to do certain things, there's nothing, I can't drag a company and make them go.
Right. So they, and there's some towns that wouldn't want to rezone for, for that type of project.
Sure.
And that's fine if that's what they choose not to do, but it's not, I don't, the one, the person talking, I don't think it's your fault.
Yeah.
I don't think that's Union County's fault. I think that that's, you know, where they choose to live, probably just doesn't want that type of.
Now, they contribute to the, the overall plan because we still need executive housing, so Marvin and a wedding can play a role for us in providing that. So they have a value, they're just not going to have the tax base go to their community.
Right.
You know, they may have the tax base in a higher valued home from an executive living there, but so they all, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tapestry looking at it. People that want a rural lifestyle will go to New Salem. If they want, you know, something next to Charlotte, they'll go there. If they want to live in Uptown, they can still do that. That's the beauty of where we are. And so if you look at, we do that wage survey every year, and it has in there the zip codes where the people live, and so it goes from uptown Charlotte to basically the far side of Monroe for your, sort of the salaried white collar, and then the blue collar runs from basically Indian Trail down into Peachland, not Peachland, excuse me, Chesterfield County, up in Stanley, and out probably halfway through Hanson.
Thank you. One other thing, the unemployment rate in Union County is very misleading because after they're on the unemployment rolls for a certain period of time, they're moved off, and they're not counted anymore.
Any other? One more question. But we're apples to apples, right?
Yeah. I mean, that occurs everywhere. That would occur everywhere, that same drop off.
So still, we're apples to apples with Hanson County, Stanley County.
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And again, the, the, this job is, is wonderful, it's rewarding for us that we get to be here and talk to you and do a lot of positive things with the projects and incentives, but it takes everybody, the, the entire county. This team in Union County recognizes the big picture and is supportive of us and our operation. We could not do it without everybody here at the, at the county.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, Chris, you'll soon be relocating offices.
Yes.
Chris Boyd, what, do we have a timeline?
November.
November. The Economic Development Commission will be moving into some Class A.
Yes.
Office space in the Progress Building.
Yep. They are, Chris and I were over there the other day, and they were ripping floors out and everything else, and it's well underway to being renovated. Appreciate their work.
Chris, I will say one thing for your presentation. It made, I was sitting here listening to the, the dating and breaking up, and then the dating and getting married, and then having a baby. I think I will modify what I say from this point forward. The baby killed the parents, too, but. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
See, Chris, one of the things, too, we talked about earlier tonight, that you're creating an unanticipated revenue in taxes that are coming in because you're bringing these industries in. And for that, we appreciate it. It creates other pleasant problems for us how to solve.
Right.
The, your new baby, as you call it, is a true partnership with Union County and Monroe.
Yes.
Manager Watson, myself, and Commissioner Rape are on that board, and it is great to see how Union County and Monroe's working together, so.
Yeah. And that, again, that was the brainchild of Ms. Michelle over here, so, and Jason helping us craft it, so again, another example of the teamwork, so.
And I'm looking forward to the June meeting when we talk about maintenance hangar and ICT in the school.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
22305, capital budget request for fiscal year 2023. I recognize Ms. Lancaster.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, board members. Tonight, we have a couple items that I just want to provide some context to before Beverly Lyles comes up and provides a couple of reports. This is really context for the next two agenda items. First, Beverly is going to provide an overview of the county's capital requests for FY 2023. This is a little peek into what you can expect to see with the manager's recommended budget presentation on May the 26th. We felt it was important for you to see the larger landscape of capital needs along with the next item, which is specifically related to the capital and bond requests for SPCC and UCPS. At the June 6 meeting, you will be getting a complete capital overview from facilities, which will give you more specific project information, as well as information from our consultants, Creach and Associates, on the county's master plan, which you've heard a little bit about over the last few weeks. In regards to the requests from our education partners, Beverly will provide you with an overview of these requests, along with debt modeling that goes in concert with those requests. Tonight, we're not asking you to take any action. You'll all recall that you've had two special meetings regarding these requests with SPCC and UCPS, and that each organization made their formal written requests in March as requested. These items are to give you context, information from the specific requests, and to respond to any questions that you may have in order for us to come back at the June 6 meeting with the items that need action. Beverly will provide you with an outline of the required next steps for any bond questions. You will see that for UPS, we've actually broken that out. We were asked to look at that two different ways by, by a couple of board members, so you'll see the entire package and the debt modeling that goes with that, as well as debt modeling for just the two large school projects. So Beverly will outline that for you. We also have representatives here from SPCC and UCPS to answer any project-specific questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Beverly.
Good afternoon, Chairman Rape, Commissioners, Manager Watson. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight the capital project requests for funding for fiscal year 23. We will look at these in different buckets. For the general capital fund, we'll talk about our facilities, county capital requests, public safety requests, as well as miscellaneous other capital. Included in that will also be South Piedmont Community College. We will also look at the requests from Union County Public Schools and the solid waste capital. I did not include capital funding for water and sewer because you will be spending a couple of days this week talking about that in more detail. And then we'll also discuss the next step in our capital planning process. To begin with, we'll look at an overall summary for the county's general capital projects. 100% of the funding source for these will be Pago County capital revenue for $4,208,000. This is broken into categories, as you can see, major capital of $620,000, critical infrastructure request of $75,000. The majority of the funding is our annual repair and replacement program for $2,275,000. South Piedmont Community College for $375,000. Other miscellaneous capital needs, $563,000, and the public safety request of $300,000. And we'll look at each one of these in detail. For our major capital requests this year, we had two major capital projects that were presented for funding. As outlined here is the Union County jail roof replacement. Chris Boyd and his team has indicated that they are seeing some leaks there that are needing repair. Also, you are seeing the Judicial Center and Governmental Center renovations, Phase One. This is not highlighted in green because it is not recommended for funding at this time. However, as Michelle said, you will be getting an update from Chris Boyd on June 6 for our total space studies need, and we will commingle that with other major capital project needs for the county going forward. Critical infrastructure funding, the $75,000 is for uninterrupted power supply upgrades and replacement, which is basically your battery packs for your information technology. For our annual operating repair and replacement, we are recommending $2,275,000. $1,525 of that is for general county facilities, Union County Sheriff's Office facilities of $500,000, and Parks and Recreation for $225,000. And I'll be glad to stop and answer any questions you might have about these projects before we move forward. Public safety project request is a continuation of the volunteer fire department air pack replacements for fiscal year 23 for $300,000. The other miscellaneous projects that was requested for funding is the continuation of funding for North Carolina Department of Transportation, was it critical intersection programs and projects as presented from the planning department, as well as Phase Three of pictometry, which is the flyover that the Tax Assessor's Office is doing, and this is the third phase of that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about these particular projects. For South Piedmont Community College, if you recall in our joint session with them about their long-term capital needs, on an annual basis, we are providing to them capital funding for their repair and replacement for maintenance, as well as technology needs and their HVAC needs. That total annual capital funding is $375,000. In addition to that, for their long-term capital needs, if you recall from our joint meeting, they had bond requests and other requests. They had a need for a state-of-the-art instructional technology facility, a healthcare simulation lab, an outdoor learning lab, and a fine arts building exterior upgrade. We are not recommending those for funding at this time. It will not be built into the fiscal year 23 Pago capital cash. We plan to revisit those as well once we have our audit finalized at the end of October to determine if we have additional one-time funding available for those projects. So total funding that we are recommending for South Piedmont is their annual capital funding of $375,000. Moving on to Union County Public Schools, many of you are aware that they have submitted their request to us last week, and their total CIP needs are broken down into the categories that we fund those by. For building systems, they're requesting $9,167,950. For expansion and renovations of facilities, $6.7 million. For painting needs, they have about $800,000. For their roofing needs, $1.8 million. For classroom, office furniture and equipment, $341,000. Their laptop lease payments, which is built into their normal annual capital program, Technology needs of $557,000. Their vehicles and related equipment needs, $500,000. Their vehicles and related equipment needs, $537,900. And their band equipment, which we have been funding for a few years now ongoing, of $50,000. Their total CIP needs are $23,310,575. What we have built into our Service Level One fiscal year 23 budget, based on our growth that we're seeing in Avalon Taxes, this indicates a 3.5% growth from the prior year funding is $19,122,311. In addition to that, they have sales tax refund money available that could be a funding source if they were to choose to ask for that, as well as some completed project savings. We recently closed out some of their older projects, and they had a little bit of funding left for that. So today, the total funding sources that are available is $19,517,000. The funding difference needed for this request would be $3,792,000. In addition to the total request, we also had a request from Union County Public Schools' Board and Staff if we could entertain the idea of funding them early, $3,323,000 worth of projects. These are projects that they have slated that they would like to be able to start over the summertime while children are not in school. And I, do you have any questions about the schools' requests before we move on to solid waste? No questions? For solid waste, you heard earlier from Jeff Caton, the needs to continue capital improvements at solid waste operations. And their request this year is $700,000 for two different projects. One is to access, the access road to actually widen that at the landfill for $350,000, and to begin the scale house renovation and expansion project for $350,000. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about this. So the next steps in our capital planning, this is Pago capital money, which would be included in the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 23. We would not ask you to adopt any capital project ordinances related to these projects until July, after the budget has been adopted. And the next steps, as Michelle mentioned, is board workshops for long-term capital planning. You'll be hearing from the facilities team on June 6, and as well as your having water and sewer workshops upcoming this week. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about capital funding, if you have any, before we move on. So moving on to the next agenda item is the Union County Public Schools and South Peamont bond referendum requests for the November election. To start with, I want to go over our current outstanding debt for the county. We'll touch on the bond referendum requests separately, because those are two separate requests from two different entities, and we will discuss next steps that would be required from you as a board and the actions you would need to take leading up to the November election. So to begin with, I want to present to you our current outstanding total principal debt for the county. As you can see, our general obligation bond debt is around the $342 million mark. Installment financing is around $47 million. Our revenue bonds that are outstanding are $438 million. Total outstanding principal debt as of the end of June 30, 2022, is $828,257,000. In addition, this is broken down by functional category, meaning what did we issue this debt for? As you can tell, for general government, it's, which is our county facilities and judicial center needs, it's around $31 million. Public safety needs, the majority of this is the emergency services complex and the sheriff's office renovation and expansion that is currently ongoing, so around $45 million. For economic and physical development, this outstanding debt is mostly related to the industrial park that we have. Union County Public Schools outstanding debt is around $241 million. South Peamont is around $39 million. And our cultural and recreation, $12,688,000, which the majority of this is for the Southwest Union Library. And as you are aware, the water and sewer projects are, the majority of that is the issuance that we just did in 2021 for the Yadkin Program. Is there any questions about the outstanding debt before we move on?
No, ma'am.
This is an illustration of our total debt service for fiscal year 2023. What will be included in the recommended budget, total debt service for all debt, including principal and interest, is going to be $74 million. As you can see, as the years go down, the debt does drop off a little bit each year as, at a time, which is not a significant decrease, but around a, once you get to 2026, about a $3 million decrease annually after that timeframe. This is an illustration to show you by debt type, just on an aggregate, as it drops off over time. As you can see, in 2023, going until about 2030, before it can, starts to drop off gradually after that. So now, we'll move on and talk about the bond requests from Union County Public Schools. Just to give you a reminder of what their bond request included, it included construction for Forest Hills High School, East Elementary, Phase One of East Union Middle School, which is designed, and I believe they can answer to this, but that's remodeling the current Forest Hills High School for East Union. Parkwood High School, Phase One, which would be designed for a new high school, Porter Ridge High and Marvin Ridge High, which was designed and construction of field houses, I believe. The facilities warehouse, Phase One, is designed for construction of a new warehouse at the Goldmine Road location. The CTE school, Phase One design, as well as program contingency, which is built in for all of these projects at 3%, as well as administrative cost for two years. The total bond request was $149,256,459. I also wanted to show to you their long-term capital bond requests that you received in the joint meeting, just to show you that the East Union Middle School and Parkwood and the Phase One-type projects really build into their next bond request. The Phase One is for design, and then their Phase Two would actually be the construction for those different facilities throughout the county. So in working together with our financial advisor, Stifel, we have put together a long-term debt model, and I wanted to go over the factors that are built into this, so you understand exactly what you're looking at. So we work in conjunction with our tax office and budget team to determine, what is our total taxable estimated assessed value in the county, starting out for budget for 2023, and what do we want to use as a growth factor? What are we seeing in the market for growth on our tax value? And we're looking at a 3.5% growth rate each year annually after that. And then the next column indicates, what is our current dedicated property tax equivalent rate for our current debt related to Union County Public Schools? The second column is the proposed tax rate that would be required if this debt was issued in full, starting in 2024, because there is a lag in between the time the bond would be approved to when we would actually issue it, until the time that we would actually start debt service payments. And then the difference column is what you really need to focus on, is to what you would have to increase the property tax rate by to be able to cover the debt. So looking at the 2022 bond request in total, this is total debt service, estimated principal and interest. When we built this rate model, we needed to look at the market volatility that's going on right now. If you pay attention to the bond market, the Federal Commission is actually raising rates. They plan to raise rates again. We are seeing an influx in the rate environment. Just last week, for a double-A rated, I mean, a triple-A rated Geo bond, we could have issued at a 295. And today, when I looked, it's up at 3.15%. So that's a 20 basis points difference in just a week. And if we look back historically over time, just in the month of April, when we first started running these rate models, we've seen an 80 basis point increase over a month's time. So in order to build these rate models, we're using our best guess estimate based on the market data and building in a cushion, a cushion for where we think we may see rates in the future. So keep that in mind, is that these are estimates based on our financial advisor's expertise, as well as looking at the yield curve out for 30 years to determine, where do we think we may end up at when we actually go to market? And this is built in issuing full principal costs. There's no premiums taken into consideration for the debt service, because we're uncertain of where the market would be and what premium may actually be generated. So I want you to focus on the first year's request, because as each year goes out, we will have to es, I mean, update these over time to determine what the tax rate increase would be. So the full bond request difference would require an estimated tax rate increase of 3.87 cents. And I'll be glad to stop and answer any questions you may have about the rate model itself before we move on to the next scenario.
Okay.
If we looked at a bond issuance only for Forest Hills High School and East Elementary School for the bond referendum in 2022, the tax rate increase difference would be 3.5 cents. So you're looking at about a 0.30 difference, 0.37 difference, if you did just Forest Hills and East versus their full bond request. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about that.
Stoney.
Right now, what is our, what is our tax rate that we break out for school bonds? 1.09? Or what's our rate that's indicated on the, on the tax bill?
So currently, our, well, it's not broken out, because it's total debt altogether. So it's all county debt. We don't break out the school separate from a tax rate perspective anymore.
When did we stop?
This past, in 2022, when we adopted the 2022 budget.
Okay, because, yeah, I guess one, one thing I'm curious about is that the value of a penny went from 2.8 to about 3.7. So if we were still accounting for that, I don't remember it ever changing, even though the penny changed every year. I don't remember that number changing.
So when you adopted your revenue plus a penny tax rate, that new penny value was taken into consideration when FY 22's budget was adopted?
Okay. So, so that would have dropped by a significant amount?
I would have to look and see, but I believe the tax rate for debt is 10 point, I'm not going to say. It's over 10 pennies right now for all Union County debt combined together. Out of the 58 cents.
It would have been what the year before?
I, I don't have that number with me right now. I can get it to you, though.
Again, because if a penny generates 3.7, and it generated 2.8 the year prior, and then if we have another revaluation, what does that? I'm trying to see if that even takes into, you know, I know we dropped the tax rate, so that has an effect on it. But just, just curious is that if we would say this is voter-approved debt?
Right.
Does that go down each time?
Voter-approved debt, I mean, even if you're looking at your reevaluation years, you have to cover your debt first, no matter what, before you pay for anything else in your adopted budget. So looking at the overall tax rate, that would be the one thing we would not ever consider cutting the tax rate on, because you have to cover 100% of your debt.
Right, but if we're saying 3.87 pennies, and next year, a penny generates more money, does that go down each year, too?
The proposed difference, as you can see, this is a heat map, so as debt would fall off, if we didn't issue any new debt, then yes, it would fall off.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions before we move on?
I don't really understand what your question was, Stoney.
So the, the total assessed value is going up each year, so to Stoney's point, the, the value of a penny goes down?
Yes, that's the value going up, and we applied, and we applied a growth rate.
Right.
So we are contemplating the value of the penny changing over time.
Yes.
About 3.5.
Every year.
About 3.5%.
Well, it's a combination, I mean, it's the mathematics between the value and the growth rate.
Because I, I was just remembering, like, when we did have it separated out, seemed like that 1.09 just stayed there for a couple of years. I might be wrong.
It was 3.09, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it was, I think, like, the last bond that we passed, the 51 million, or the, the one that we had for the, because we had the Sheriff's Department, we had the 911 Center, and then we had the schools.
The difference, Commissioner Rushing, is that at that time, and this is what we pointed out to you, I think, starting two years ago, is we have all debt now in one debt fund. When you were adopting that 3.09 cent, you never considered the fact that you were still carrying a significant amount of debt in your general fund.
Right.
It was only debt that was issued post 20-
2016 voter-approved debt. Anything prior to that was in the general fund.
So now, we have all of your debt combined, so that you can see all the money that is going, all the tax rate that's going to debt in totality.
Now, now, in that debt, because you, and this is one of the questions I had earlier, you had half that debt, it seemed to be, in water and sewer, which is paid for-
This doesn't take into consideration any of water sewer debt at all.
Okay, so this, so that's out of this.
Yes.
Because you had that in earlier, 438 million.
Right, right. The only thing that is shown here is the outstanding Union County Public Schools debt.
So the water and sewer customer rates wouldn't be included in this part of all.
No, this has nothing to do with water and sewer.
Enterprise funds do, are in a different-
Right, but, but you had it included in the total debt of 800 and-
Yes, that is correct.
Something.
That's just an illustration, because in your fiscal year 23 budget, you're going to have to pay for that revenue bond debt. That was just an illustration of our total debt that was going to be included in your 23 budget.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions before we move on to South Peamont? South Peamont Community College also indicated a bond referendum request for 2022. If you recall, their total request was for three specific projects, Center for Entrepreneurship, Phase One, the Aseptic Training Center, as well as a public safety training center. I've put a star on the public safety training center, because you, as a board, have already taken action to appropriate some ARPA funding for the design for that and for a site purchase for land. So as the management team and staff has taught, we have recommended pulling that out of this bond request and including that in a overall discussion for general county facilities going forward. And again, this is just to illustrate, in the joint workshop that we had with them, their total long-term capital needs for education going through 2030. And what we are including in their bond request is just the two projects, the Aseptic Training Center and the Center for Entrepreneurship, which would be a $28,440,000 bond request. Same factors applied to this debt rate model as to the previous. As you can see, the current outstanding debt for South Peamont adding on new debt over time. And with the $28 million that would, could be issued if approved, the difference in the tax rate that would be required to fund that is 0.74 cents, so not even a full penny. So, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding this debt model.
Okay.
So the next step, as Michelle mentioned, on the June 6 meeting, we will be asking you as a board to take your first action to adopt a resolution, to file the notice of intent with the local government commission. That date is very important, because following that, we have other critical factors and dates that we need to meet. If you approve the resolution at the June 6 meeting, we have to file a public notice in the newspaper, and we have to let that run for 10 days prior to us actually applying to the LGC for the bond referendum. Following that, in July, we would introduce the bond orders at one of the two meetings in July and adopt resolutions to set a public hearing. You have to hold a public hearing by August the 1st and adopt bond orders and adopt the resolution setting the actual bond referendum by that first meeting in August. And the reason for that is by August the 5th, we have to file the resolution to the County Board of Elections to actually put the questions on the ballot for the November 2022 bond referendum request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about next steps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 22-317, offer for the purchase of a partial 08-303014E.
Chairman Commissioners, previously, the Board had approved the potential sale of property that, that we've owned- the potential sale of property that we've owned for several years. This is property that was actually deeded to, or by a deed given to us by NCDOT when they actually did the bypass. It was some surplus property left over from that. It is essentially landlocked, doesn't have a legal access to it. We felt that we had no need for it. The board approved us going through the process of allowing that for sale. We have received one bid on the property. The bid is $1,000 over tax value, so 33,400, tax value is 32,400. Essentially, the board just has to give us an idea whether you're willing to actually accept that offer and sell the property for that, or what are your next steps that you'd like to take on the property?
Any discussion? I'll make a motion that we accept the offer to purchase parcel 08-303-014E and 2 and adopt Budget Amendment Number 29 contingent upon acceptance. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to 22-319. I move that the board suspend Rule 29 of its rules of procedure related to Item 22-319 text amendments, defer action on Item 22-319 at this meeting, and remove Item 22-319 from the agenda and authorize staff to place the item on a future board meeting agenda for consideration and decision. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Manager.
I have no comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Simpson.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to thank and congratulate our fire department, since our fire department has achieved that highest status and has an impact not only on our safety, but also a financial impact on citizens. So congratulations, the job was done. With regard to EDC, success doesn't just happen. And so I congratulate Chris and his staff on the cutting-edge management of EDC. Fantastic evaluation.
Commissioner Simpson. I mean, Russian. I'm tired like you are. Commissioner Williams.
I also would like to congratulate the fire department and make a note that it's, these four were very successful and they worked hard, but it was a joint effort of the entire fire community in Union County that needs to be committed. We're blessed to have the opportunity to work with these people. Chris, congratulations. I would ask that your presentation be made available to our communication so that the community can see it. Because I think, as we talked, having some of these municipalities understand more about your success rate might encourage their participation.
Vice Chairman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comments tonight.
Well, it's been a long afternoon. Thank you to all the employees that stayed. Thank you to our visitors. And I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?